Okay. I would like to call this Waldaborough Planning Board to order Wednesday, July 8th. We have a quorum. We have myself, Jim Russo, Sarah Hotchkiss, and Ted Wooster.
I don't know why he's saying that.
And we have Max, who's a really small person in the back in the town office. Is that you?
Yeah, that was my hand.
Matt, the X just dragged.
And who's in the, if you're, if that was your hand, who's sitting at the table?
That's Johnny at the table.
Oh, hi Johnny. Okay, we have Johnny Cosno also. We have our trustee scribe Susan. And we have some various guests and applicants, I presume. We have any known or anticipated adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Okay. So we have some citizens here. Do we have any citizen comments apart from the applications that are on the docket for tonight? Not hearing any. We will move on. The next item is the minutes from the June 10th meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review those? Are there any questions or comments? Is everyone comfortable voting on these minutes right now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sarah, you okay?
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay.
I can't vote. Well, yeah, I was there. I was sort of there. Yeah. Never mind. I'm ready.
Okay. All right, and Ted was there as well, I believe, at the last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say or signal aye.
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 All opposed? That's, well, actually, we had four positive votes, so, oh, and Johnny, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, great. Okay. Motion carried, minutes approved.
Who was the maker of that motion, Mr. Chair?
That was Jim.
Thank you. Ted seconded it. I've got.
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay, so I have nothing under old business. So there being no objection. We shall move on to new business. We have three site plans for discussion tonight. The first is the boat RV storage at 2018 Atlantic Highway. This was the subject of, last month, we had a pre-review. So we had quite a bit of discussion last time about it. Was it Max, or do you, or is Mr. Moody here to talk about this?
Yep, Matt's over in the corner. If you just want to go up to the podium.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can hear.
I know, but why do we need to hear that?
Can you not hear them?
No, it's not too bad, I guess.
I can try to turn it up.
All right. I'm great at yelling, by the way, so if you need me to yell.
That's Max.
To be heard. Okay.
Is that good? If you could just give a quick introduction and explain the application.
Okay. Interested in inserting a boat RV and auto storage business at the 2018 Atlantic Highway on the old ten minutes of the property. I'm currently under contract to buy that. And seeking to basically build some buildings in three phases. The first phase is a 60 by 120 foot wood frame metal shell building to store boats and RVs and automobiles in. And then down the road, three to four years, constructing another building approximately that size. Then maybe in 10 years, another one approximately the size. Buildings, they will not be heated as cold storage. And also on the property, any boats that, or RVs or whatever that people I don't, I would like to store outside, there'll be some limited outside as storage capabilities. So.
I was saying, there's outside.
That that's what we're, that's what I'm aiming to do, I guess. I know last month, we went through some of the applications and some questions on that. And I know, okay, one of the things I did have a soil test done, which was just done for the person to make sure that it future, if you wanted. Currently, there is no septic or well on the property. But down the road, I wanted the soil test done to ensure if we did, if we did drill a well, if we had a bathroom or whatever, that it would pass. And so that, that, that was something I did have done. And the copy of the building plans, I sent them electronically. I have a hard copy here also. Pretty straightforward on the building, I guess. Okay. And so addressing some of the questions that were in the pre-application last month. The I did not have a stormwater management plan done for this first building, which I was, you know, as, as the next phase, as I did off another one, another building, that was the plan to have one done then. I have spoke with Captain Dorsey about doing one and have obviously done a few for the town. We're with other clients, so they told me, you know, what we'd need and approximately timeframe on that. That's something that that I still need to do even with just this first building in the first phase. So that was one thing that Max and I had talked about. And let's see, also, the impervious ground. Doing some measurements out there on the property existing. The building that's currently there is 576 square feet. And currently, the gravel, the gravel there, it has, that's it currently is about 17,750 square feet. The lot size is 5.15 acres or approximately 224,000.
Why'd your name come out here?
That's the lot size. The proposed building is 7200 square feet. And adding gravel, gravel pads on each end to enter and exit the building would add approximately 8,800 square feet of gravel. So in the grand scheme of things, what is currently there and what this boat, what building would create and the, and the new gravel on each end, approximately a little over 34,000 square feet of impervious surface, which they moved out at the last, percentage wise, is approximately 15.3% of the property. And again, projected down the road, if your building was approximately the same size, you'd have the same area for entrance and exit. So you would be talking about another 32,000 square feet. So you wouldn't quite double what you have. Should be approximately 30%, maybe 29%.
Excellent.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, because I believe 70% is the threshold on that, so. Let's see, some of the, some of the other issues, lighting. I mentioned lighting, any lighting on that, on the builders would be the downward facing on the ends of the sides. The screening, screening on the property. There is currently, from the driveway entrance to the east, some natural screening there of trees. There's not a whole lot from the driveway west. And trying to, because of the elevation differences, the route one is probably 50 feet higher than the property itself. You know, trying to create some screening, I'm not sure if you could within the DOT, whether they're on there that allow you to do anything just inside the guide rail. That's about the only way screening would kind of work. If you did it down on the property, I don't, fencing or even natural vegetation, I guess, would have to be quite substantial in order to screen anything. So I know I talked to Max that, you know, we would just leave all the natural stuff that's on the roadway there now. And and so I'm not exactly sure there. What else? Any ideas of screening there, I guess, so.
There's something else we can move on to.
Yeah.
So, comments from the planning board?
Um, so let me just, I just have one, the, the, this, what you're proposing now with this building, the impervious total was what percentage? When you added all that up, it was?
15.3.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And I might have to need Max to come in here. So, so the 15-foot vegetation buffer, as it stands now, would they be able to see right in all the storage vehicles and all that? Because if it's 50 feet high, I mean, I'm just wondering how you rectify that, how you, how you abide by that?
The, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what, well, I mean, the majority of stuff would be stored inside in the buildings. I mean, that's, that's the whole.
And it took off, though, you said here in your proposal that you could have some outside storage.
Correct, correct.
So if that came to be, I'm just wondering how that, how that would work.
Okay. Currently, the way the I'm not sure if, I think he.
I saw the thing.
The part?
Yeah. Right. Well, not with the, the aerial map, I'm active, no, and plotted out the yeah, yes. Okay. Yes, right. Okay, so currently, under this proposal of that building, any, as of right now, any storage of anything outside would be, that would be behind this building, or behind this building over here. Currently, Henderson Roofing has, I think they store like three trailers.
Hello.
And then the next proposed building is going to, is proposed, is going to, I'm hoping two is parallel to Route One, and then, so any outside storage would be on the on the north side of that building, but.
And I was just wondering if you, as you go along and say businesses moving, which I hope.
I'm involved in this, I'm involved in a serious, I'm involved in a serious conversation elsewhere.
Ted, you have to mute.
So you have, you know, six or eight, 10 boats. Do these boats and vehicles and RVs, do they ever leak fluid? You know, oil and that type of thing. What happens to that? Is there a plan for that? You know, it seems like those vehicles, they leak something. I'm just wondering if that's a concern at all.
Well, yeah, actually, one of the, a gentleman has a business such as this. I've been, I've been working with him. He recommended that exactly by the oil and water. And put it under the automobiles especially, and the RVs, boats are not such a big deal. They're having to order their body, they're pretty sealed.
Well, that's at least, you know, you've got a handle on it.
Right, exactly. I, that's, that's one thing you mentioned was, and I noticed. So it's, it's all the vehicles and RVs that.
The pan's under them. It seems like always heating a pan or something.
Yeah, or the oil absorbent.
Right.
The oil absorbent pads.
Are there any other questions from planning board members?
Play and mute. Here we go. Couple of, couple of questions. Uh, the application says it's want to change the use to vehicle storage and, and vehicle service, or boat storage and vehicle service. What's meant, what's the service part?
That would just be the, that would be the storage. It's the same as, it's sort of under the same category. Well, you're doing RV, it's RVs, correct? There is no specific category for RV storage, so it would fall under that same category for vehicle service, just for RVs. But I, but I can remove that category since, since that's more for something the code enforcement officer would deal with. And the planning board's focus more is on the boat storage aspect.
But my concern is if we approve it for vehicle service, that the provisions aren't there to adequately safeguard doing any kind of service operations. So that, that's my concern. In the original.
I think I said in my summary, and I think I've said it here. Yes, if you go to the performance standards section, the performance standard sections under conforming with down ordinance plans, vehicle service, in this case, storage of vehicles and RVs, allowed in Route One, A, but requires CEO approval. And I believe I said in my summary as well that you would be focusing on the boat storage aspect.
Well, focusing in what it's approved for is two different things. I think as long as it's clear that what we're approving is storage.
Yes. Not the RV.
I guess it's both boat and vehicle storage, but no service. Can't be, can't be a Winks garage. It's, it's
Correct, correct.
Yeah. Those service-related items, because that's a whole other type of business. So, what's the best way to handle this, Max? I think that if we, if our, if our motion to approve was for this application for storing boats, cars, and RVs, and it's just, and it's just reference storage is what we're.
So you would motion to approve on the condition that the vehicle service half of this, or the RV storage half, however you want to phrase it, is approved by the code enforcement officer. Since that is the person who has the jurisdiction on this. The land use ordinance says that RV or vehicle service, in this case, in Route One A, gets approved by the code enforcement officer.
Right. But we're not approving any vehicle service.
Correct. So you're saying, you're saying the application is fine, as long as it's also looked at by the code enforcement officer to approve anything regarding vehicle service.
Well, that's one, maybe it's just a semantic thing, Max, but that's, that's one way to look at it. The other is we are, we're consistently, you know, the board frequently approves applications with conditions. And the condition here is we're not, we are only approved, we are approving storage.
Boat storage.
Well, but it says the proposal is storing boats, cars, and RVs.
So you're suggesting it has, it's amended so that it says he's only getting approval from you for boat storage?
No, I don't know why, I'm, I'm saying, I don't know why we can't approve this proposal for storing boats, cars, and RVs. But we're not approving service or anything else. That's, that's not what we're approving. That's a separate issue.
Okay.
Because I don't want to make an approval that then, I mean, if it, if we're making some assumption about the CEO and something else happening, I don't think we need to do that.
Well, the vehicle storage falls under the vehicle service category. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Because there's no definitive category for vehicle storage. There's just vehicle service.
So we can approve it under that category with the proviso that there are no cert, no vehicle service activities planned or approved by the planning board.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's a fair way to slice it. I like that. Okay.
Thank goodness I didn't have the windows open.
Now, Jim, you said you had a couple of questions. I think that was your first one. Yeah, yeah, the, the second one is, I'll go back to, to what I mentioned last month. I, I know that in your purchase and sale, Matt, that, that you've asked the current owner to clean up all of the the trash and the, and the old roofing tiles and everything that are out in the back. Sometimes things happen as, as you get to closure and, and it doesn't always work out the way that you had planned. I would still like to make that a provision of this approval, that, that site get cleaned up, regardless of who does it.
Right, I agree. Yeah. And then actually, I guess I spoke with the realtor a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, like you said, we, we will make it happen one way or another. If they don't get it done, then, you know, we have plans to, to get rid of the rest of it also. So one way or another, it will get cleaned up.
I'm not sure how we, well, that, that's just one of the conditions of approval. Yep. Good, that's it, that's it for me. I'm going to mute myself because the rain's beating on this window. Yeah, it's coming down now.
Um, in case we do lose power, I'll try and call every member and see if we can do this, like, try and get back online, but if not, we're likely going to have to just cancel the meeting because we would have lost public participation. So just keep that in mind.
Yep, thank you, Max. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Moody? Sarah, Ted, Johnny? I'm going to mute for a second. Ah, robocall instantly stopped. So if there are no other questions, I've only, I've only captured here the the issue of the storage versus service that I think Jim summarized well, and that it's contingent on site cleanup from the prior roofing business. Are there any other contingencies? Questions or comments from the planning board?
Okay.
My hearing done for now. Are there any citizen comments regarding this application?
For those who do want to speak, just on the bottom left of your corner, there should be a mute button and a video button. You just have to click on that. Let me try this.
I see.
Hold on. I know there was there's one person here. I don't know why they're not unmuting.
Yeah, there's somebody named, somebody under the name of Lynn, and somebody under the name of Cindy Stevenson.
Yes, and I know Lynn is, wanted to talk about the meeting tonight.
Okay. On my, on my screen, it's in the upper right-hand corner. Okay, there we go. Lynn is now unmuted.
And Lynn, if you can also just identify yourself just for the minutes.
Lynn James.
Okay. You can.
Please proceed. Do you have any comments?
The one question on how much how much land this will be taking up, how many acres? When we built our facility, we were told you can have minimal water runoff containment if you have less than an acre.
So.
Sorry, go, please.
So I believe that this, well, Mr. Moody, you could, what's your total acreage? I believe it's.
It's not total acreage of the property, total, total acreage of how much he's going to be using.
Okay.
If you're over an acre, you have to do the water, you have to do all that stormwater runoff. If you're under an acre, it's, you still have to do stormwater runoff, but it's not as what's the word? No, DEP permit was required.
Right.
Under an acre, but over an acre, you have to have DEP.
You made your point.
Yeah. I believe that this is times point one six. This is, well, if I calculate this right, you said it was, Mr. Moody, you said it was 16.3% of the total property, which is 5.15 acres. So the total impervious is less than an acre. It's point eight.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, obviously, oh, no. It's only It's only, uh. Sixteen, approximately sixteen thousand square feet. Uh, of new, um. Um, what you watch Ben there is, is. Approximately. Uh, eighteen, little over eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand two hundred was already there.
We had to do.
Well, does that answer your question, Lynn? Is there any other?
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, good question.
Thank you.
You, oh, you're most welcome. Thank you for participating. Um. Anything else, um, was, uh?
So I guess the. Matt, for, for your, in future applications, then I guess that's a trigger point you need to be aware of. You get above a certain amount of. Developed space. That then you will be into a, um, stormwater runoff plan.
Right. Yes, in the next page that.
I was distracted for a good chunk of the beginning of the meeting, but. Did you mention anything about, uh, when that would be like, if you. When you would go to someone talking about stormwater, would that be soon or would that be? When you're doing the second page?
In the, in the second page, which is. Currently three forty.
Yeah, for, for Lynn's benefit, in, just in case it's not clear there. We, we've talked previously in the pre-review about additional things that Mr. Moody might plan. And we're, we're only approving this current plan with this single additional building and what's associated with it. And any further, uh, expansion of it would have to come back before the planning board.
That is correct.
Uh, just so you know, you probably do, we've lost Susan.
Yeah. Alex, were you trying to ask a question?
What's that? Max, you said something?
I think Alex was trying to ask a question.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, so. Uh, we need someone to try to keep notes while Susan is, because I would prefer to keep going if we can. Till she gets back on. Um. I'll do my best to take some notes and if we can combine notes afterwards, um, perhaps that might work well.
He is also being recorded as well, so. I'll do a local recording just. In case.
Oh, yeah. Great. Yep. Okay.
So.
Um. So if there are no other questions and comments. Jim, if I could prevail upon you, you, I, I liked the way you, uh, summarized the. Approval. In terms of the storage. Relative to the service, so.
This is back.
Great. So if, if you would be willing to, um. To put together a motion and, and include the contingency of the, uh, roofing site cleanup. Um, that would work well.
Okay, well, do you want to just, just. Capture the two contingencies and then move to approve based on. Those two contingencies or?
Sure. Okay.
Want me to, want me to restate the contingencies?
Yes.
That. The approval is for. Storage of boats. Vehicles and recreational vehicles. Not for the service of. Any of those.
And the second, okay, and the second contingency?
Second contingency is that the, the trash piles. On site that are currently the existing owner's responsibility to remove. Need to be removed prior to. Any building permit being, being issued for, for this work.
Great. Could I have a motion to?
Second that motion.
Uh, give with the contingencies.
I would second the motion with the contingencies.
Okay, I need to, actually, I was, I wasn't making it, but I was, that's okay. Jim?
I'll make, I'll make the motion. Uh, I, I move to, to approve with those two contingencies.
And then.
Ted, you will second that?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So we have a motion made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. You are, Mr. Moody, thank you.
Thank you. Later, board.
And good luck with your new venture, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is. Vehicle storage, vehicle service at nine forty-four Old Route One.
I'm Todd Squire. And, uh. Just purchased nine forty-four Old Route One. And. We want to. Ask to be able to park our customers' cars. Store, store their vehicles inside and then trailers. And some of our vehicles outside on an existing slab.
Taz, how are you? I did a little, uh, my own little mini site.
Yep.
I, because I live up here, so, you know, I drove up on my motorcycle. And that's an old chicken block, correct?
Right.
What do you, how about the structural integrity of that building? Because I was looking at it and it, I don't know. A little rickety. Do you, are you going to refurbish it or let it sit or how are you gonna? Do you have any concerns about the structural integrity of that?
There, yes. Before we store things on the second floor.
Yeah.
We're going to put. Art, drive arts on the second floor. And before we do that, we have to put sledgers along the side and. Pulser the beam down the center of the building. And that will happen. And currently, the, the west end of the building is pretty rotten.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where we're proposing to put in a high door.
Okay.
And then we're going to tear it, use the floor, which is begging, how, find and repair the rock, get rid of most of it. So that is our proposal. And I'll take care of the issue there.
And while I'm checking here, I, I like that idea, but. Because it's a chicken, it was a chicken coop. And there's certainly biological issues with it. Do you have any environmental concerns about? Working with that and, and knowing that, you know, the, the waste of a chicken and all that. Is that, is that doing anything?
It hasn't, it's not a concern to us. It seems somebody cleaned it up pretty well.
Okay.
Previously. Upstairs is room clean.
Yeah.
And downstairs, there's some debris and some dirt that's silting from the outside walls. We're going to recreate it so that. Water from the roof runs off with the rain.
Okay.
And, uh, but otherwise. The foundation is very solid and the floor is solid as well. Okay. Excellent.
So. I have a question. Regarding. You, if I recall correctly from reviewing this, that. The. You, there's an entrance. To Route One, which is. And there's a permit waiver in here because it was handled by the main DOT. Um, and you show on the map that you have a right of way.
It's actually not a right of way, but it's a permitted. Entrance of Route One. I may, I may have missed, I don't know.
Oh, so that, that, all that property is a single property, so you don't need a right of way. Is that what you're saying?
It's thirteen. Some thirteen plus acres.
Yeah, okay.
That whole entrance from Route One to the building. Is existing and, and on that property.
Okay. So. But, but so that, that, uh. Is there an existing drivable route from Route One along that pathway to the? To that, to the building area? Are you, are you going to create that?
It's, it, it exists. I wouldn't call it drivable.
Okay.
We, we just punched a hole into the entrance of it and we need to. Remove a few trees that are, that is mostly brush, that's thrown up in the road bed. It, an old road bed that needs a culvert and it'd be cleared, the topsoil cleared off of it, and it will be solid enough to drive again. Yes.
Okay. And, and where's the, the culvert? Is that, where's the culvert going to be?
Uh, you, you see on. The map where the, there's a ditch that runs along the backside of the building. And, and sweeps out, it's. Two-thirds of the way across the road. From the building towards Route One, I guess. There's a lighter area in the, let me see if I can find. I don't know, um. Does everybody have the map that I drew?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, you, you can see where there's an arrow, it says existing old road bed. Oh, not that outside, okay. So we're on your map where it says R thirteen plus fifty-three A.
Yeah.
Another three quarters of an inch. Up there, you can see a lighter area in the map, that's drainage, that's a. Currently there in the drainage that goes across the property.
Okay.
And the culvert is complete there, but it's. It's been failing, so we'd like to repair it.
Okay. So. Um. So your intention is to use Route One to access these, not Old Route One?
Both. Yeah.
What's that?
We, we would do both.
Both. And what, what's the criteria for choosing one or the other?
Uh, well, I, we haven't fully explored the Route One entrance yet. I don't even know if it's quite wide enough. Whether we'd have to, how much we'll have to improve it. Currently, we, we're going in and out. The entrance on. On Old Route One. And we'd like to be able to access it. From Route One. And so we, for future. Projects or. For, if, if it's easier to haul trailers in that way with vehicles, then we would prefer that.
And why would you prefer Route One? For those versus?
A little more gradual entrance. So the, the entrance on Old Route One is a little steep.
Yes.
On.
Yeah, as a cyclist, I can tell you how steep that is.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so. We just wanted our options. That's one thing we wanted to make sure that we did have an access there before we purchased the property.
Okay.
And then the, the other. Part of that is if we're not having to drive through the neighbor's yard, I mean, we share a driveway in some respects, I guess. Their driveway is really narrow going by their property. And, um. They currently use our property for parking and drive. And if we don't have to. Open that up. Then it, it just, it would look better visually and be preferable for us. It's easier to come in from Route One. So.
Okay. Could you speak, you, you mentioned a, a fence and I can see where it is on the map, but it's unclear what it's shielding from what, if you can.
Okay, so, drive, say you're driving, you're cycling up Old Route One. And you pass the house there on the right. There's an opening. To the back end of the lot, not the back end lot, back behind the, the barn. And there, where this slab is. Currently, our, some of our vehicles and equipment is there and you can see it from the road. And we'd like to block that view from, for the neighbors or from anyone on, on Old Route One. And for our own. For security. So we choose who goes in and out.
Okay.
Everybody involved thoroughly comfortable with the amount of runoff that might be using the culvert. Like down into the. Lupians Garden Center.
I don't, is that a question?
Yes.
Understand all that you said.
Ted, can you repeat it? We had, um. Lights go out just a bit. Can you, uh, and then that happened?
Yeah.
You have a clear understanding of the runoff that would be using the culvert and its impact potentially on the, on Lupians Garden Center?
Oh, the culvert there and what effect it will have on Lupians Gardens? The one you mentioned, the culvert you mentioned earlier.
Right.
Do you know what effect it'll have on Lupians Garden Center?
I don't know where Lupians. Garden Center is, I guess. I mean, it runs off into the thirteen acres of land down and it runs. Down to that swamp and brook at the bottom.
And out behind the garden center.
Well, it just, it's got to go uphill before it gets to the garden center. But anyway, I, I don't, it's been that way. For many years and I, all, all we want to do is improve it. I don't see that we're changing that. But I. If there's a concern, you know.
So that, in other words, the culvert already exists, correct? It's just in disrepair?
Yes. Yep.
So let's see if I can find where you are on the route.
It's a seasonal drainage, it looks like to us. Me.
Taz, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
You're going to store, my goal is to store car parts?
Mm-hmm.
Is that for, are you going to service cars that park here? What, what? Is this a salvage thing or what, what is that about?
That's a fair question. So I run a car repair shop in Camden, Maine.
In Camden, okay.
And, uh, so there, we do all our work and we need, we currently store. A number of cars and parts at Stetson's in Warren.
That's it.
And so we're looking for a place of our own, so that's why we've done this. We want to be able to store. Hard drive hearts on the second floor.
Right.
So we restore vintage cars and so. It's very hard to find parts. We need a dry place to keep them. And so our, our intention is to stockpile parts.
For, for antique cars?
Yes.
Does that, Max, change anything as far as the application?
Be an antique car or the?
Yeah, yeah. Does that, does that have any bearing on this?
No, so the whole thing of, of vehicle service, it's all going to fall under that, the same category, just because it's more of an accessory building to. Um, the store and.
Okay, so it's not the main.
Yeah. It all falls under the vehicle service. Because it's all going to benefit the Camden store.
Okay.
Andrew. A couple, a couple of points or questions?
Hold on a sec. Hold on a sec. I think they're still, uh, Johnny and Johnny?
Yeah.
You got, when you, you guys had, sort of had an off, you were off conversational there and we couldn't hear you, so.
Sorry.
Just make sure we.
Do you want me to repeat something, Scott, or?
If you, if you feel it's helpful to everyone.
I asked Taz just about, he says, my goal is to store car parts and I was.
Right. We caught the first part of that, yes.
What, what that entailed.
Uh-huh.
For the salvage type thing, but he, and the tacit notes for antique, so. That, that was the gist of the conversation.
Okay. Um, before I get to your questions, Jim, um, just to go back to what Ted was saying. Ted, were you talking about, about Moose Crossing? Is that what you meant?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, if you were at Moose Crossing and coming back towards Walderboro. You'd have quite a ways to go and then Bullwinkle Steakhouse. Before you get to this property. On Route One. So it's quite a ways up the hill, I think.
I was just thinking about potentially massive runoff sometime, but I guess that hasn't happened. The hill absorbs major volume.
Yeah, and that's all trees and then brooks.
Yes.
As well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, um, Jim?
So, so Taz first, um, I believe at the beginning you mentioned that this is a wooden barn, existing barn. So, so Taz first, um, I believe at the beginning you mentioned that this is a wooden barn, existing barn?
Yes.
So my question then really is for Max.
Yep.
Max, does the fire department have any concerns about vehicle storage in an old wooden barn?
I can ask that for, uh, I can ask Chief Smeltzer if this is a concern. When, when Taz first came to me and asked about this, I did ask Bill Maypower what his thoughts on the whole thing, and he said a lot of it, a lot of agricultural buildings, especially wooden ones, are always reused for different things. So, this isn't a new, unique issue. But if that would be something you'd like, I can have, I can have Chief Smeltzer just take a look at this, see if he has any concerns.
He, he, I'm just thinking access, if he had to get to it.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
If something happened, especially since it's storage and not occupied, that, that might be a concern. Okay, um, second, I'm looking at page one, Max, of the document that you produced, uh, parking and loading. Leaving, it says, oh, maybe it's not Max, maybe it was Taz that produced it. All parking will be at least eight feet from the closest property lines.
So that was an item I wanted to make sure was addressed. Cause in the ordinance, it says that parking is not allowed within eight feet of a property line. So I'm just, that was more of just stating, uh, something relating to the ordinance. Uh, I can pull up the exact spot. Just give me a second. Do you have any questions, Ted? You can do that while I'm looking for this.
Well, I guess, I guess why you, why you looked that up, that again, the only way that they'd be parking within eight feet or, or.
Yeah.
Closer to the property line is if some hard pack, some surfacing was done to, to prepare a, a parking area. And that in itself would require some approvals. What we're approving right now is strictly to park on the existing slab and to park in the existing barn.
Correct, and I found the section, by the way. It's on page four dash nine of the Land Use Ordinance. Section J. All parking spaces and access drives shall have at least eight feet from any side or rear lot line, except for the additional requirements and buffer yards. So that's what I was referencing. That the slab and the existing barn, where most of the parking, where the parking is gonna be, at least eight feet, and I think it was measured at eighteen? Eighteen feet away with the.
Eighty feet for the barn and seventy-six feet for the slab is what I see on the plan.
Hmm.
And as for the driveway, I made a mention of that, that's an existing shared driveway. So. Didn't know if that, had too much weight on it.
That's all I had.
Any other questions or comments from Max or the board or the applicant before we open it up to citizen comments, if there are any? Okay, are there any, uh, comments, uh? Any citizens, butters here that have any comments or questions?
I believe Cindy Stevenson called me earlier.
Hello.
Hello, and let me unmute you. Hopefully this'll unmute you. Nope, uh, there should be a.
There you go.
There you go.
Here we go. So we.
Yeah, could you please identify yourselves for the?
Yes. Cindy and Andy Stevenson.
Okay.
And we are the property owners on the other side of the said chicken barn.
The other side? You mean to the, to the, to the south?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So my question, um, using the access of that driveway, it is on the hill. And I'm just concerned about trailers backing in and the speed that people go on this road can be excessive, unfortunately. So that's a concern I have. Um, I don't know, you know, I'm assuming trailers are gonna take a little bit of time backing in and um, managing that driveway. And the other part I'm questioning is security. You know, if these are antique and nice cars, I'm assuming you're gonna have some type of security for this. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Good, uh, Mr. Moody, do you wanna respond?
Um, this is Taz Squire.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am really sorry.
I think that Moody left.
But uh, yeah, trailers, getting trailers, luckily we have a good relationship with Joel, our neighbor on the, on the, uh, north side, so we, I can access directly and pull straight in. Either direction, we can pull straight in back to the slab where we unload. And um, but we've tried it multiple, multiple ways and it's not easy to driveway, that's why we wanna open up an access point to Route One. So, and in terms of security, yes, we, we will need something. I'm sure for insurance, if nothing else, but want something to alert us if, if there is activity other than our own in the building. Because, yeah, because they will be our customers' cars and of, of value.
Yeah.
And, and I suppose I, I do have one other point. And it's just, it's gonna be related to that runoff now that you've gone, you've done a very nice job in clearing that one side of the barn now where all that brush has been built up. But so now we have that entire surface area of that barn roof on that side when it rains, that's gonna be coming off on that disturbed ground and, and that's probably, I mean, we'll, we'll see where all the water goes. But that's gonna need, I believe, some kind of treatment. I hadn't noticed anything as of yet there.
No, we have not completed that. We, we intend to surface that with something that like crushed stone or something of that sort, it touches the water, but carries it away from the building into the drainage ditch, which has been filled with muck for many years.
Right.
The drainage ditch is on Old Route One?
No, it runs out of the back of the building.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So it runs off and behind the slab.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, there's, the area we cleared to the south side of the building runs into a pooling area that we've created so that it doesn't just run freely into, into the drainage ditch.
Okay.
We're trying to control it. But there's more to be done, for sure.
Okay.
So, okay, so this is just right adjacent to the building, so this is in the eighteen feet between your property line, Stevens', and the building, okay. And then is it, is it?
We don't really know where the line is, it's an existing ditch. And we've been, we've been wanting to introduce ourselves to Cindy and and uh, and see what their understanding of the property line is, so.
Okay.
We, we, there are two stakes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there are stakes, yeah. So we should get together and we'll.
So is your property wooded on, on? Your property is wooded in between where you're, okay, okay. Great, yeah, that can make it awful hard to find, um. Depending on how much multi-flora you have.
Quite a while.
Yeah. Um, okay. So does that, does that, do you have any further questions from? Okay, great, thank you. If you do, just butt in again while we're trying to finish up. So. Um. I'm looking through the my notes and I don't see anything that I captured that would amount to a contingency here. Uh, was there anything, anything from the board members or Max that we should, uh, include that's not already in the application that other than the, the motion should be with the contingency of the storage that it's storage of vehicles and RVs and not, our approval is not including any service. There's no service of vehicles.
Storage of vehicles and parts for the, yeah. Set of, yeah. I think, Jim, correct me if you're, if I'm wrong, but uh, do you want me, but do you also wanna include having the fire chief take a look at the building?
You, you, you mentioned that you had once before, right?
Are you talking about me?
Yes.
Um, I'm only going off of what Bill has said, and he's just, and he has said that agricultural buildings, including wooden barns, are reused all the time, not specifically for vehicle storage, but they are always reused for different purposes. So it's not an uncommon practice, but I do not mind having, uh, Chief Smeltzer take a look. If this.
So I think, yes, yes, I'd like to have, put that in as a contingency to have the, the fire department weigh in on, on, primarily on access. And, and if they see any, any issues, they probably won't have any, but I want them to be aware.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think Mr. Squire, you mentioned, I mean, I think, I think the insurance will, will be the, will be the key factor. Uh, once you put vehicles in there of, of your insurance coverage, they can be pretty sticky about those things. So it's certainly something that actually, if you can meet the fire chief to discuss it, if he's going to, to see it, he could probably help you understand pretty well what might be required of you for the insurance purposes as well. So it might, it might work out to, to your advantage as well. If you have no concerns about us putting that in there. Um, are you okay with that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I understand that, I'm on the Lincolnville Fire Department.
What's that?
I'm on the Lincolnville Fire Department and it's an important aspect.
Oh, cool, okay, good.
If I was a fire chief, I'd wanna know how the access is, what's in the building and, you know. Yeah.
Okay, so I have those two, uh, contingencies. Were there any other questions and comments? Before we have a motion on this?
I'm sorry, the first, one contingency was the fire chief examination. What was the second?
The other that this, uh, approval is for storage of vehicles and parts and does not include, uh, vehicle service. Similar to the last one we, we did earlier tonight. You all set with that, Susan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so could I have a motion to, to approve based on those two contingencies?
I'll move to approve.
I'm stuck with it.
Motion made and seconded. Any last questions or comments? Johnny and Sarah, okay?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Who was the seconder, please?
Ted.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Squire. Um, good luck and thank you to the Stephenson's for coming.
Thank you.
Be helpful. Okay, so. Hasn't been any thunder and lightning for a little bit, so might have, uh, dodged it here. Kinda stuffy, okay. So next, we have the food pantry.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Brown. I've recently been promoted to be the operation manager of the food pantry. And we spent three months, I think, up here doing the food pantry, out of the municipal building. And during that time, we learned a lot of lessons. Number one being that the previous food pantry, the one that we were in, was totally inadequate for doing the level of service that the town required. Towns require. Uh, for one thing, it's very small. A third the size of this room. And with the food in there, there could really only be one, maybe two people working, and they're volunteers, maintaining any kind of physical distance. And up here, we noticed that they used a an operation where they set all the bags on the tables, they filled them, they pre-bagged them, had them stored in the bays where the fire trucks are, and when people come in, they go through. They had a pit crew that would take it out and it was very efficient. And we would try to do the same thing, so we, uh, had a chance to get a new site. It's a little smaller than up here, but it's a lot bigger than what we had. And uh, we took a chance and got it. We've been able to set it up with, uh, more ample freezer space, a refrigerator space that we had before. It's at ground level, there is a garage door access to the left. And it's a cement floor. And it's a lot easier to clean it. And people can work in there without being in each other's space. And there is a drive-through driveway utilizing the town right away that was up on the southern end of the property that goes up and leads up to the fire tower. Fire tank is the tower. So they can drive through there and around. We can chuck them in, we can get the food through, and they go out the other driveway with the house. When we did it up here, we were doing it every week. As we're starting back now, we did it yesterday, but we won't be doing the food pantry again for two weeks. And we're going to be on a first and third Tuesday basis. Unless something drastic happens. We have signage out by the road directing people what is the entrance? Which is the exit. We have cones out to direct the traffic flow. And I think that's about all we've got. Uh, is there any questions or?
Well, Jeff, first of all, I wanna thank you and your staff for the fine work that you put for the town.
Oh, thank you.
It's very, that you do a great job. And in this time, in this time and this situation, you know, kudos to all of you. But again, I'm gonna sound a little dumb here, but does the food bank, do, do, do certain people or companies, will they drop off products to give to you? And then you package it up or, I guess, I guess my concern is how do you maintain enough social distancing and can you wipe down the products you get? How does that work?
To be honest, I don't believe we've done the products. We, we get products from Good Shepherd.
Right.
Every Tuesday that we have the food pantry. And once a month, we get federal foods that come in with a, a beef app, they call it. And that's our, our our big ones, but we also each week purchase our own food. And then we, so the food pantry, we get uh, the local farms, they're, they're very generous.
Right.
We get potatoes from We get potatoes from a farm up north that duly managed to acquire a religious church over there. We get eggs from Bowden's. And I go over Monday afternoons over to Brunswick to the MCHPP, which is, I, I think it's part of Good Shepherd, but it's a warehouse, right, and we pick up a lot of food there. I got a van and usually fill it. We post it forward, thanks. And, uh, we get stuff from Anna Hibs and stuff from Main Street Grocery and, right. But other than Bowden's bringing the eggs, uh, potato truck drives up, and that's probably every I don't know, maybe once a month, that's it. They bring quite a few potatoes up, but we get about three, four. And then, uh, Good Shepherd comes. And they're, I couldn't do it, but they can drive right up in there and they back right up by the back door and, right? It seems to work pretty well, and they try and pull driveway, so it doesn't seem to pay them too much.
And this just kinda makes it streamline your operation a little better?
Oh, absolutely.
That would be a, a big help, I'm assuming.
It is, and, and we don't have, the customer don't come in the food.
Right, right.
They stay right in their car, and we intercept them down in the parking.
Yeah.
And find out which door they want in. They take the food down and put it aboard, and they go, excellent.
So you're, you're doing the, you're breaking down, you're, you're organizing what comes in and making up boxes to then bring down. So in the food pantry, you're doing the, the sort of logistics of making up, combining these different elements of the food, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you have the space inside there to do that.
I, you have the space.
Space inside there and tables?
The room itself is thirty by thirty, so it's the size of this room.
Okay, yep.
We've got freezers on one side, and we've got pallets around with the food on it, we've got some the string of tables down the middle and.
Good, okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Um, this is Sarah, I have a question, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I'm curious to know, is the food pantry, what is the entity? Is it a five oh one C three, is it an organization or?
No, it's a five oh one C three.
It is, oh, okay. Um. And, and you're using, on that property, you're, you're only using the barn area, you're not using the residence?
Well, there's a shed that's attached, or cardboard, I should say, that's attached.
Right.
And we're using that to store some of our cones and that stuff. We put the cardboard out there that we, we generate while we're breaking down the curtains. And, uh, the trash hauler comes, he probably came today, he usually comes Wednesday, yeah, so we have a food pantry, picks it up.
Okay. And, um, is there any plans for somebody to live in that residence?
So.
Yes. Well, I'm, I'm looking at.
So, um, you're not gonna see them in the screen, but the owners of the property are in the town office right now, I can do you wanna stand up or do you want me to just move the camera over to you? I, I'll, I'll shift the camera to you, give me one second. There they are.
Hello.
Oops. Sorry. Pressed the home button by, by accident, technology, am I right? Oh no, the camera's right there, yep. Just introduce yourself.
Yeah. Yeah. My names are Ron and Peggy Davis, and, uh, we purchased the Midormic House, uh, which now houses the food pantry uh, a couple of months ago. And, um, the reason that we did that is that we have, uh, only been a resident of Waldabow for about three years. And, uh, we're quite active in the Bard Bay Church, uh, which has, uh, a fairly decent, uh, mission outreach, and through that mission outreach, we realized that there are a lot of needs in Waldabow that, um, really aren't being met, or they need to be met, or would like to be met. And, uh, we thought that, um, we, uh, hopefully could be part of helping with those needs. Uh, not sure in what respect, but, um, we knew, uh, that the food pantry was, um, not happy where they were. There was, it was, like Jeff had mentioned, very inadequate. About three hundred square feet, and they now have close to, uh, about a thousand square feet. And, uh, it, it's quite an improvement, and we're very, very happy that, uh, we could offer this space to them. And, uh, it really seems to be working quite well. Uh, when we purchased the property, um, the driveway was barely passable uh, with a four-wheel drive that is quite high off the ground, would be fine. And there was, uh, barely room for two parking places. And we knew if we were to do anything, uh, relative to community service using the back, that, uh, we would have to improve that, and, uh, that was our first priority, which we did. Uh, we spent close to twenty thousand dollars in removing dead trees, trees that were touching, actually touching the structure. And a lot of dead trees that have fallen on the property. And, uh, we, uh, spent a lot of money improving the parking, there was a lot of rubble there. There was a big pile that they just piled up when they did some foundation work and, uh, many, many truckloads of, uh, just debris and everything that were needed to be taken away to create a decent parking spot or parking area. So at this point, we have about, uh, we've created about three thousand square feet of parking area, which, uh, equates to about eighteen parking spaces. And it's good stone and, uh, very adequate, the driveway is, was totally redone. And, uh, that's quite adequate. Um, with, uh, the days that the food pantry is there, um, we do lose probably six, uh, parking places, uh, be, just because of the function of the food pantry. There's, um, they do make a loop through there, which Jeff mentioned, and it, uh, starts up the town right away and, and circular, circulates around through the, uh, properties. So we lose those six spaces, and we, there's a, a, a place where they stop to check in, there's a tent there that, um, they, uh, they, they check in there, they move a little forward, and the holder's box, all my Jeff, Jeff had mentioned. And, um, so, uh, the parking place during the food pantry time, uh, is adequate, um, maybe not as, um, much as, uh, would be desirable, but uh, yesterday, when they had, when they, uh, served yesterday, there were actually a, a couple of parking spaces that weren't even used. And things, it seemed to work, uh, very well. And, um, so we're happy at this point that, um, that the food pantry is there and that we could, um, uh, provide that space for them. Um, as far as the, you're probably wondering if there's any, uh, plans for the future use of the property. We strictly purchased it, uh, like I said, to, um, uh, provide whatever we could help with and some of the needs of the town. And, um, as far as future use, um, i- if you.